And we're ready.
Thank you. Welcome to the regular meeting of Hamilton City Council. It's August ninth, 2023. Little after six o'clock. We're in city council chambers at three forty High Street in Hamilton. We have two public hearings this evening. One involving a justice assistance grant, the other one involving zoning amendments. They'll be heard later on in the agenda. Do a roll call, please.
Pullman.
Present.
Fear.
Present.
Vaughn.
Present.
Ryan.
Here.
Nav.
Present.
Lauer.
Present.
Mohler.
Present.
We have a quorum.
We're starting offering a prayer. Councilmember Joel Lauer, following a pledge of allegiance, please stand if you are able.
Lord, thank you for all the blessings that you have bestowed on our great city. Help our leaders, help guide our leaders so that they, so that we continue the prosperity that you have provided us. Please look over our policemen and firemen and keep, as they continue to keep our citizens safe. And finally, as we enter the new school year, please give our teachers and students the ability to continue the success that they have had so that our city may maintain the sustainable or sustain the success that we have had.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now get to that part of the agenda, which is special presentations. And we just had some great presentations this evening. First one we have is Miracle League Stars and Headline Sports recognition. So I'm going to be joined by councilmember Eric Pullman down here. And we're going to hear about a really neat, unique get together with certain folks who attended the lot and about some stars. And we need to have all the folks from Headline Sports that come over here. And I mean, our Miracle League people that came over tonight. I'll introduce y'all. Headline Sports over here, Miracle League. Come on, sporty, you can come up. Eric Pullman was actively involved in this event, so he's going to lead us in.
Okay, really, uh, microphone. Yes, we gotta have that. Yeah, I do. I need this. Got to make sure I got my notes here, too. What I wanted, what this presentation is about is I asked the mayor, well, first of all, I want to thank the mayor and city council for letting me do this and the citizens of Hamilton for listening to this presentation because I asked the mayor to look at a business that we have here that just started in Hamilton a couple of years ago. And what they have done for a special organization is, you know, I'm very, as a, as a parent of one of the players in the Miracle League, very, just was very proud of watch all the kids with their uniforms and what you guys did. And as a council member, I'm proud that our business in Hamilton stepped up and did this. So, and I'll explain that here in just a minute, but I want to introduce y'all. So first of all, Headline Sports, this is the recognition for Headline Sports. And so we have, I'm going to see if I got this right. This is Darren, right? And where's Jody sitting back there? Well, Jody's back there, too. Darren and Jody Waters. We got Ben Cosgrove. And we've got, I believe, you're Emily Brown, and I know you're Valerie Utipole. So, and these are the people that, we'll explain this a little bit after our small presentation, here with the Miracle League tonight. And this is really about the recognition for the business. And Miracle League will speak about this a little bit in a few minutes, too. But we have everybody, well, let's start this way. Everybody knows you. So we have Jim Woolpert. He's one of our coaches. He was actually our step-in manager for when our other manager got sick. And Jim, right now, just needs a lot of recognition because he's one of these people that come out just because he wants to. He doesn't, I don't believe you have anybody in the league, but man, he is, you're a good pitcher, too. So he does a great job. He had a tough job pitching, and that, that's a tough job. Everybody that has seen my son before, he is one of the players. He will be modeling some of the shirts that we have from Headline Sports. And a little fun fact is, he did not get his height from my side of the family. Tyler Bradshaw, he's the executive director of Miracle League. Great, great spokesperson. You hear him on TV, Hamilton, all the time, car parade and everything. Just one of the heart and souls of this organization. Bonnie Nuxall, Kim Nuxall, I mean, there's really these two. If it wasn't for them, we, our, our kids wouldn't have this. So there's, there's a heart and soul right there. And I think the Nuxalls are the heartbeat that keeps it going. So I appreciate everything you do. We'll talk a little bit more, oh, well, actually, what happened so that you know the... Yes, I do. Get up here. You need to show off, you need to show off the other shirts that they made.
You know what, Dave, for me, I like to see Ellie Evan here lift that bat over his head.
Oh, wait, this is a special, but I'll have to go to the story about where we played. But this is the special bat that we were given at the, at the, um, the tournament. But this is what happened here so that everybody knows what's going on is, let me set my phone over here. This thing's in the way. We'll play it. So what happened, I think it was back earlier this year, that you got a call from Pittsburgh, I believe, Sean Casey's team about doing a tournament. And it's at, they were going to, wanted us to do the Big Bear Tournament in Pigeon Forge, Tennessee. Now, the Big Bear Tournament had, what was it, forty-seven teams? And that was including ours. But these are about, about forty-seven teams and only eight special Olympics team or Miracle Series teams. So these are kids that were traveling all the way from San Diego that came to play baseball in Pigeon Forge at this beautiful complex that Pitt, Kyle Ripken, Ripken Experience, which you'll see on this video is just unbelievable. And of course, with Tyler and Kim, they don't want to go down there in just a simple fashion and just regular uniforms. So they reached out to some people. And there was quite a bit of an expense. And I don't know the actual figure from the expense. Did everything get paid for eventually? Every, I think eventually it was like $750 a person to go down there. That all got donated. And then he reached out and he wanted everybody to look really sharp, coaches and everybody. This is where Headline Sports stepped in. He wanted a donation, some kind of donation, a little price break. They did more than that. They, they thought outside the box. They gave eighty-five hundred dollars worth of uniforms to this league. No charge. And not just what you see here. You, you see that Evan has his fancy red shirt, his shorts, his hat, the, his game jersey, plus he had two warm-up jerseys, which were T-shirts like this. And these were, these took you guys a lot of work to do. Every kid had their nickname on the back of it, their name, whatever they wanted. It's just beautiful. The Reds stepped up and gave a ball bag, a helmet, and a glove. Yeah. The helmets never fit you, son. But they're, yeah, it's all right. But I mean, just everybody stepped up. So it made it, it just made it beautiful. And we had such, such a good time down there. And I'll, I'll let Tyler talk more about that because he, he definitely knows. But I want you to watch a video. And I, hopefully you guys didn't see this, but you might have seen it already. But this video and all the photography was donated. This was done by a professional company. I received, I know you received more, but almost three thousand pictures I had to look at. And to get maybe a dozen of them, the still photos, we'll do the video and I'll show you a couple of still photos. And I'll turn it over to these guys and the mayor. But the video tells everything. It's just awesome. It's professionally done. And this was our weekend. So Daniel, go ahead.
This is the bat, sorry. There's the Miracle League.
What a amazing facility this is. And it's an honor to be a part of this. And I want to start off with the Miracle League. It is an honor to be out here and watch you guys. And I'm going to tell all the other players, you want to go see baseball at its purest and at its finest, go watch these athletes compete.
Out of Cincinnati, Ohio, Joe Nuxall.
It's more than just a road trip. It's more than something that's fun. But fun is not the primary reason we do it. The reason we do it is because it's life-changing. And to see players who probably never thought they'd have a custom jersey with their name on the back, probably thought they'd never play a game on the road in the foothills of the mountains in a gorgeous facility, to see them do that, to see people make this, you know, three hundred, three hundred and fifty mile drive, families in like huge groups coming down to celebrate this moment and what it means, it is beyond heartwarming. That doesn't even describe it. It's a, it'll change you at the sole level. And every, every time I watch one of our kids at bat, it's, it's doing that.
Our goal is always to give our kids a major league experience. And, you know, a few years ago, it just popped in my mind, what about a road trip? I talked to Sean, as you, as you know the story, he was all in. And it's so awesome to see kids out playing ball against other teams from other areas of the country. It's fantastic.
Actually, I couldn't imagine us still be doing this twelve years later. I mean, all of the, all of the families coming together and just all the families that traveled here. It was amazing.
Today was Dad's birthday. Yeah, yeah. Floating around. He probably would have cried all day with Kim.
It's what we do.
His parents were telling me that every single, like, they were getting to the point where every day he would look at the calendar and count down when it was time to leave for Pigeon Forge. So you, like, you could tell he was excited. He was so excited on the field. He usually gets like super excited, but this was, like, I've never seen him so excited before.
And there's the ring right there. And there's the medal. So let me see where my clicker is. I had it over here. Oh, there it is. And I do want to do a couple of quick stills. This is at the reveal, the night that you guys brought him out and showed everybody. Make sure I've got this right, Daniel. Yep, I'm pushing. Okay, that's, this is both teams. We had an adult and a younger team. And this is what we saw when we got to Kyle Ripken. These were just, the mountain views were unbelievable. I'll go through these real quick. There's the fields. That's what we had a look at every day. It was terrible. And you know, these are, these fields are all the same astroturf they use at like Paul Brown Stadium or whatever it's called, Paycor. So stadium now, they're just beautiful fields. This is Mike Matheny, who I think his, to see the baseball at its purest was the best line I heard the whole weekend. He was just awesome to be out there. And you, you had to come out and watch these kids. I'll just scroll through. There's all the other select teams that you can see our kids sitting with. There, of course, is Jim. Don't worry about the little guy next to him. But this guy, again, Jim, you're my hero for that weekend. You did a great job. All I did is took orders and couldn't read the paper right. So, and Tommy Long, he was our volunteer of the year, I think. He stepped in when people had issues and couldn't coach. Tommy is a great coach right there in the middle. And Joey's our mascot. And just a couple more shots. And I want to get to the, the best shot here in a minute. I had to put this one in here. This is TJ. This is my buddy. He mocks me all the time while I'm out in the field. And I'm, I can tell you what I'm saying right there. He's laughing. And I'm saying, TJ, quit mocking me and look out front there. And somebody got that picture because he, he jabbers the whole time he's out there. Tells me about Star Wars and everything. He's a great player. And did I go backwards? There we go. And there's another, the great coach, Jim Woolpert, right there. Great job. And, oh, yeah, Teddy Kramer, if ever, let me go back to that. Teddy was also like one of our coaches. And Teddy Kramer, if nobody knows him, he was a bat boy for Cincinnati Reds. That he has Down Syndrome. And he was bat boy for, what, a couple of years? Or he still does it every once in a while? Yeah, still, still works at the stadium. So Teddy was a great time. Just, these are all the moments we had this weekend. It was fantastic. This is all because of Headline Sports. It made us look like pros. And right here, I mean, this, even the cameraman jumped into the action. It was awesome. I, that was the guy taking all your pictures. And come on, James Resner. And if you see in the back there, there's some players from the other teams that came by and watched the games. And they took Mike Matheny's recommendation, come out and watch games. And we had teams there all week, all weekend, and it was just awesome. This right here, this picture is what really, that right there. Perfect. You made, you made us look like all-stars, man, I tell you. So I'm going to turn it over to the mayor so he can start with, I know he can direct everybody very well. So.
Evan, I still think you should lift that bat up like they do after they hit a homerun. Sure, why not? But don't, don't hurt anybody. Okay. I mean, basically what I've seen here tonight and all those photos is pure joy. And I'm seeing also eyes water up. And that's like tears of joy. And words can't really express what this event was about and what we've just seen up there. But thank all of you for, for being involved. And Headline Sports, they were probably the best dressed team there. Headline. I'm going to pass this to my left because I think Kim and Bonnie and, and he was a great hire, wasn't he? So, Kim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, it's hard not to cry. I've seen that about ten times. It's just amazing. Yeah, our goal all along is to give our kids a major league experience. And it starts with, to me, how they dressed. And, you know, they were major leaguers, man. They felt like major leaguers. They played like major leaguers. And everyone looked up to them like major leaguers. For me, it was cool. Try to hold it together, you know, that's not going to happen. But I have a little thing. I haven't really worn jerseys with Nuxall on the name of the, on the back. I don't know why. I just had a thing all my life, not doing that. But I put that aside. I wore my Nuxall jersey. I was going to wear it tonight, but it's in the wash, still trying to get the sweat stains out of it. But, you know, I was there, I think, one hour, and a gentleman comes up to me from out of town. They were on vacation, saw the jersey, told me the whole story. He grew up in Hamilton, moved away, lived in St. Louis, knew all about Dad. How can I buy a jersey? And that wasn't the only one that came up to us, you know, talking to us and asking us all about the Miracle League. So it was a great opportunity to, to share this story. But again, the apparel was amazing. We can't thank Ben and his team enough for, for making this happen for us. It was a dream come true for all of us. We look forward to next year. We hope to bring as many as we can over to St. Louis, to Sean's facility. But boy, this was a great start. It's going to be hard to top this for sure. So thank you all again. I appreciate it.
I, I just want to take a moment and, and thank everybody at Headlines. Kim and I deal with a lot of companies, a lot of organizations. And there's typically two things we talk about when we talk about companies that are going to donate towards what we do. We're looking for those companies who get it. And we're looking for those companies who are all in. And when we say companies who get it, we're, we're talking not the intelligence of how to make the uniforms, how to do that, but companies who get it from a character perspective, because that's what drove Joe and his life. That's what drove Kim as an educator. And from the moment I first reached out to you guys, you got it and you were all in. And, you know, I, I, I couldn't believe it when I saw the invoice for eight thousand five hundred dollars worth of gear for our volunteers, for our players, and to see that entirely wiped out and what that meant for them, truly just changed how we're approaching this program and what we're going to be able to make happen in the years to come. One of my favorite moments from the, the jersey reveal was there was a, a young boy who had just put his jersey on for the first time. And he comes running up to Valerie. And Valerie says, "You look amazing." And this young boy just responds and says, "This feels incredible." That feeling was about more than the way this fabric felt, and it feels great. I'm, I'm not getting paid to say this, but it was about the feeling that you all created in that young man's life, in the twenty-three other athletes who went down, in the twenty volunteers that made this trip, and the hundreds of fans that came down. You all gave them that feeling of appreciation, recognition, and encouragement that will bolster them far beyond what happened in Tennessee, but that will give them hope when the days are difficult in the years to come. And you all being all in from the start has changed the game for us. And we're just proud to partner with you and to be able to honor you for everything you did to make this happen. So on behalf of our organization, all of our players, our families, thank you so much for being incredible people, incredibly talented, but more than that, for having a heart that truly affects young men and women that, that we serve on a daily basis.
I'm not, I'm not the speaker of the family, but I think you can see from the video, from the testimonials, that we're a community organization and that the Fairfield, Greater Cincinnati, Hamilton, community all contribute. We have, we have players from Southern Indiana that, that come, come to our field to play. And it's the community of all of you and all of the people in our community that support and donate and make these things possible for our players.
Coach.
Thank you. Wasn't really looking to speak, but I am extremely honored just to be chosen to, to lead this group and just happy to be here and honored. And everything turned out great. And thank you, everybody.
My wife always has a final word. But it's, I actually just got to say one other thing. And I know this has been a little longer than I wanted to. But people ask me the same question all the time. How do you deal with a son that has a disability? You know, isn't that kind of tough? No, it's not. I mean, we've had a rough times. But I count, I think my wife and I think it's a blessing. We've got to meet so many people that I would have never met before in my life. And thousands, I mean, because we, he's been in sports for twenty-seven years. And we see the, when there's so much bad in this country, there's, we see so much good in everything that we, you know, we're involved with, with him. And then if it wasn't for him, I wouldn't have met you guys. And it's, you know, been proud of having a Hamilton business again, step up like you did. And that's why I had you here tonight. Because it, it's, it's a blessing that we get to meet people like you. And we do appreciate it very much. Okay? So as a council member and as a parent. Okay? Thank you.
Oh, gosh. Can I hold this together is what I'm wondering. I don't, I don't know what to say. This, this was just an absolute experience of a lifetime. This is something I would do over and over again to continue keeping you guys best dressed out there. But I can't thank you, Tyler, enough for coming in and letting me help you get this whole thing situated. And thank you to my team, who else, who helped me out and everything and was there to support. So.
You hit the nail on the head. A jersey is just a jersey, you know? And those are essentially just jerseys. But the experience is what it's all about. And we didn't do anything, you know? Thanks to the city. You guys have been great hosts since we've gotten here. We're proud to be a part of the community. But what you guys do for these guys is, is second to none. And so we consider ourselves blessed to be a, a small part of it. Like, I can't put it into words. So thank you, you guys, from the bottom of our hearts. And, and as long as we're here, you know, we're here to support you. So thank you.
I think we need to give a big round of applause for Headline Sports for what they do and, and for being in our city. So thank you very much. Thank you all for making the trip out here. Thank you. Thanks again. Thanks very much. Thank you.
If you didn't know, there's a football game coming up. It involves Hamilton High School and Baden. So if Councilmember Nav could come down here, Councilmember Lauer, come on down here. And this is, this is historic, folks. That story was historic. Eric, this is also historic. I'm going to let these two guys kind of, kind of talk a little bit about this and bring people up here.
I just want to say that I'm very excited about this opportunity coming up between Hamilton High School and Baden. There's a lot of things that this brings to, to our town. The, for one, it's a great, it's a, it's, both programs have such great traditions. I'm not sure if anybody is really, truly aware of this, but they're over, each team has over six hundred victories and are in the top twenty-five in the state of Ohio for all-time victories. There's a lot of great things going on with this game. The, the coaches that have been involved in this game, Ed Minery, the Leonard Rush, and Terry Malone. Terry Malone and Leonard Rush are in the Hall of Fame. I, I believe Ed Minery will be there soon. Lot of great traditions. I have had the privilege of teaching and coaching at Hamilton High and have developed some of the greatest relationships of my life with some of the student athletes there and have created relationships that'll last, last an entire lifetime. As a coach and a player from Baden High School, I can't tell you the, the relationships that I have made at Baden. Lifetime relationships, best friends. And all this comes together in this game coming up on the eighteenth of August. But Tim and Pat have joined with Missy Harvey and Jeff Melzer. To create this great event that we got going on, on Saturday. I'm going to let Tim, I'm going to let Tim talk a little bit about that. But I do want to talk But I do wanna talk about this rivalry. The coaches that are in this game now, Arby Crouch and Nick Yordi are great friends, and both of the staffs are really great friends to the point that, man, we do a lot of things together, and it has been exciting. And I've been coaching 32 years, and I have coached in a lot of big, huge games, including state championship, and I'm telling you right now, I have not felt this much excitement about a single game as I have the Hamilton High-Baden game, just because it brings, it's bringing our town together, which I'm really gonna have Tim hit on, but the opportunity for this game and what it means to the city of Hamilton, and what it means to both schools, and promotes and highlights the, the great things that are going on in our town as well as our schools. But Tim and Pat have done a great job with Jeff and Missy, and I really wanna say thank you to you two, because there's kinda been a renewed spirit of working together, and I think that this is the first big project of us coming together again and really working on things as a community, and I really appreciate all your efforts. I think you've done a great job in just promoting the event, but also promoting this event as a community event and reaching out to the Boys and Girls Club and kinda, the Boys and Girls Club's one of our greatest resources in this town that just helps promote family and just the good things that you're supposed to get as a kid. And Tommy John has done an unbelievable job of renewing that spirit and what we're, I'm gonna let Tim talk about it, and what we're kinda doing with that, but, man, I'm so, I've never been more excited about an opening game. Football season is such a grind, but when you open the season with Friday Night Lights and you've got a crosstown rivalry of this magnitude, I'm absolutely excited about it, and I thank you guys for putting this together.
Dan Bates, if you'll join us as well, as a chamber, please come on up. We were so fortunate. Joel summed it up very, very well. The friendships, the rivalry, the camaraderie, the, the city of Hamilton feel, of sense of place and community, our 17 neighborhoods where the, where the kids come to school from at, at both Hamilton High and at Baden and surrounding communities. The, the athletic directors, the coaches, the teams have all looked forward to the game that's going to be held on Friday night, August the 18th. And where I was going and inviting Dan up is part of the team that we have formed along with the city and the schools and the Boys and Girls Club, is all of the businesses that are jumping on the bandwagon to be able to support the pep rally that's going to be held this Saturday in communion with the, the flea at Markham Park from 10:00 in the morning until 4:00 in the afternoon. The, there will be a pep rally between the, both the schools, there'll be a tug-of-war, food wars and, and things like that, just lots of, lots of fun things that are scheduled. The schedule is out on, on the internet now and in both the websites for both Hamilton High and Baden High School and things like that. So, please come and join us this coming Saturday afternoon to roll out the, if you will, the party that'll be going on throughout the week as we lean into next Friday night. We know that Friday night at the Shwarm is going to be extremely busy. Missy and I relayed emails this afternoon that tickets are available online at both Baden and at Hamilton High School, to be able to purchase the tickets online. There won't be any paper tickets for the event at all, it's not going to be a walk-up window, so please, if you have friends and family that can go online for you and buy your tickets to be able to come to the game, we'd love to be able to have you there. So, I'll turn this back over, I believe, to Tommy, and we can talk about the support of the Boys and Girls Club that are going to be recipients.
Yes, thank you. I just wanna first say thank you to the city, thank you to the mayor, thank you to the council, and thank you to Baden and Hamilton as well for including Boys and Girls Clubs in this historic game. I think Joel hit it on the head when he said this is a really big deal, and we're honored to be a part of it. More importantly, I'm happy that I don't have to pick sides, because I'm from out of town and I've been here less than a year, so I can just, you know, enjoy the game and, but, you know, Councilman Nab makes a great point that the game is the game, and after the game, it's about community, and it's about one city going forward and making our city a better place. So, our kids, our family, our organization at Boys and Girls Clubs of Hamilton is absolutely honored to be a part of this game, and I thank you, and I can't say enough how much we appreciate this opportunity. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to pass the microphone. Missy and Jeff, if you've got a couple of comments from the teams, anything that you'd like to be able to share?
I don't know if it's necessarily from the teams, but from Hamilton High's perspective, I'm a lifer from Hamilton. This is my home, it's always been my home. This community means the world to me, and so when we had the opportunity to renew such a game, this to me was a no-brainer, and I'm glad to be a part of it. I feel very humbled. When I sat in meetings with the mayor and some council people, it really let me know kind of the depth of this, this event. It's more than a game, and quite honestly, the result, that'll take place on the field. But what it's doing for our community, you guys, that's all of you, and that's what makes Hamilton, to me, the greatest place ever. I've never left it, and this game brings it all, to me, to fruition of what it means to be truly a Hamilton just city person. Forget about Baden and Hamilton for a minute, think about everything that's going on in this community, and for us to kinda be able to come together at the Shwarm, which by the way, it's about to give me a massive heart attack trying to just get all the logistics together, but to think about a Friday night with 6,000 people from the city of Hamilton who have roots on both sides, but will come together and cheer on a game, and win or lose, the city wins. And I'll let Jeff kinda talk a little bit about some of our community people who've stepped in.
Yeah, I just kinda wanna reiterate what Missy said. This is, if you didn't follow the news, probably this wouldn't have happened three years ago, right? But thanks to Missy, really, when we sat down and talked about mending fences and getting the community back together, she's very open to it, Hamilton was very open to it, and from that came basketball game, I think for the first time ever, between Baden and Hamilton. Girls' basketball, and this football game, two-year contract that's getting ready to kick off on August 18th. Never in my wildest dreams would I have thought the support from both communities. We got great communities, but what we're doing with the Boys and Girls Club, just kinda t-shirt sale, right? We, we both ordered 100 t-shirts thinking, "All right, that'd be good." Well, those sold out for both schools within an hour, and the profit for those t-shirts is what's going to the Boys and Girls Club. So, we both had a scramble, reorder, 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 but, so the support, and that was, that relationship was Rapid Apparel through Hamilton High, and they've been great. We have Jolly stepping up for building Conies on this event. We have Hides donating some pies for this event. Wings on Brookwood for a wing, wing-eating contest, just the support from the city, from both communities, like, our phones have been ringing off, "When are tickets going on sale? When can we get t-shirts? You don't have t-shirts? What's your code?" Called Missy today, tickets went on sale last night, so we have our allotment. We, we are almost sold out of our allotment within, less than 24 hours, and I know Missy's having the same thing. So, again, I wanna thank the city for all your support. Yeah, I didn't imagine the magnitude of this game, but it's great to see the businesses that people go before the game and tailgate it, different businesses, and support them. I think it's just healthy for the city, and it's healthy for both communities, and thank you guys.
If you wanna read about the two coaches, take a look at Hamiltonian Magazine. It's one of the finest articles about two fine men, two fine coaches, and how they worked together on the same staff for a while, and now are building up each one's respective schools. So, that's really a great Hamiltonian article. As you can hear and tell, it's better working together than being apart. This is, this is historic, and this is really, really special, and I guarantee it's gonna be better than any Texas Friday Night of Football. They're gonna look towards the Midwest and Hamilton, Ohio, of how you can be competitive and still beat community, no doubt about it. All right, now, code, code. You gotta have a code to get the tickets, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And t-shirts are on their second run at least, if not more?
About our fourth run.
Fourth run? So, this is a big thing for our city. Joel will not be part of the wing-eating contest, right? We're gonna let Joel finish this up, unless we have anybody else to bring up? Anybody else?
I do wanna say this, as far as the Boys and Girls Club, Dan Bates reached out to a lot of different businesses and was absolutely great about making the t-shirt sales happen, which provided donations for the Boys and Girls Club, and hats off to him. I, I believe that's what the chamber is, is part of what they're supposed to be about, and thank you for fulfilling that need. What a great opportunity. I am so excited about this. This has been a grind. I've never watched as much film in the offseason as we have this year, and it has been, the rivalry between Nick Yordi and Arby Crouch is unbelievable, and it probably started in January, and it was, it was a good night, and we're gonna continue to have a good night next Friday night. I cannot wait for this kickoff, and I really appreciate Missy and Jeff working on this together. I'm excited about this, so, and I know Mr. Muller's excited about it.
Now, I think the, the coin's got Joel's face on it. Stay tuned, it's about community, it's about fun, and...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Is it gonna be televised on TV, Hamilton, since there obviously won't be enough tickets?
All right, stay tuned, it's, it's, it's gonna be, be able to be viewed hopefully live, but being there is the place to be on Friday, August the 18th. How about a round of applause for all these folks who're trying to put this together?
I called Yordi a, a long time ago when I got this job, and I told him I wanted to get this going.
I, I love Arby, he's a good friend of mine. We were actually texting today back and forth a little bit, so there, there is camaraderie, I guess. I was coaching with him at my healthie for a lot of years.
I called Yordi a, a long time ago. I called Yordi a, a long time ago when I got this job, and I told him I wanted to get this going.
I, I love Arby, he's a good friend of mine. We were actually texting today back and forth a little bit, so there, there is camaraderie, I guess. I was coaching with him at my healthie for a lot of years.
Overall, we're pretty excited to play the game, and, you know, I was part of the two games we played, you know, back 20 years ago, and, and they were pretty exciting games, and I knew what that brought to the community and, and both programs, and I wanted to bring that back.
We're expecting a big crowd, you know? It's good for the city to have, you know, the private school to public school, you know, but there's a lot more to that game, too. We were just talking about knowing Arby, coaching with Arby. A lot of these guys on, on our staff know everybody on their staff, too, so there's a lot of sore lines besides just the rivalry to it all. So, I think both sides are probably pretty excited about it and ready, ready to get the season rolling.
It's second to none, I'll tell you that, you know? There's a lot of people that, you know, wanna have bragging rights or whatever you wanna say there, and, and people are involved, and they'll be in here, and, and the place will be packed, and everybody will be cheering, and it'll be nice and loud, it'll probably be an environment none of our kids have ever been a part of.
All the growth that's happened in the city, and I think the amount of people that are gonna be at that game is gonna be, you know, really, really a great atmosphere, you know? And, and there is obviously some, some bragging rights on the line for, for the players and everything like that, but, you know, it's a football game. They're high school kids, we're high school kids, we're gonna go out and play.
You know, we wanted to bring some light to our program. Baden's got a great program, Coach Yordi's did a great job over there, and he's been in, made some deep runs in the playoffs the last few years in Division III, and, and he's got it going on, and, you know, we wanna, we wanna get our program to that level just like we did it at the other place, me and Yordi together. So, you know, you know, it's pretty excited to get something like this happening in Hamilton, and I think it's sending good vibes, and there's a lot of good things happening in Hamilton right now, and, and we just wanna be a part of it.
I'm gonna introduce this by saying that Boys and Girls Club was like a no-brainer when it came to just the right organization to benefit from the football game on August 18th, leading up to it, as well as at the game. Tommy John is, is a unique guy. He got himself so immersed into this city when he came here. He lives here, he's got vision for this city and its young people, and how to improve the entire city. So, tell us what's going on.
Thank you. I first wanna start off by just, again, thanking Baden and Hamilton for, for us being involved in the game. We're so excited that we can highlight some of the work that we do at Boys and Girls Clubs of Hamilton that we've been doing in Hamilton for 70 years as part of this historic game. We feel it's very appropriate, and we're very excited to involve our, our youth, our teens, and our, our staff with the game, so thank you. And I just wanna thank Mayor Muller, the city council, city manager, and all of our city employees for, for giving Boys and Girls Clubs a platform. I think that our youth and teens deserve, I think our youth and teens in Hamilton deserve the absolute best, and that's why I'm here, to make sure that they, that they get access to the absolute best. One of the, and I wanna give all of you recognition for working hard to make a place that, Hamilton a place that people want to move to, that they want to live in, that they want to purchase homes in. I was living about a mile from the beach in Florida and decided to move to Hamilton. When I came for my interview, there was no doubt in my mind that this is where we wanted to live, that this is where we wanted to be. The values of the Midwest, the growth of the city, the opportunities to continue to impact lives here, and the work that's being done is second to none. So, congratulations to all of you for the work that you've done to put Hamilton in the place for the Renaissance that it's experiencing right now. You shall be very proud of that work that you've done. I wanna put, part of, part of the reason why I was so excited to be able to present tonight about Boys and Girls Clubs was to be able to share what we do. You know, I think that a lot of people at Boys and Girls Clubs have done a lot of great work over the years, but I think we need to educate the community a little bit more about the work that's being done at our locations, and make sure that people have an opportunity to come along and be part of that. And so, part of that is understanding our mission, is to enable all young people, especially those who need us most, to reach their full potential as productive, caring, and responsible citizens. And I just wanna focus in on a couple parts of that. All young people need us most, and that's the, the bottom line for me. It's not, it's not youth in low socioeconomic situations, it's not working-class youth, it's all youth. All youth and teens have challenges, and so by providing resources to those parts of our community, a variety of resources, that is how we serve all youth, and that's the work that Boys and Girls Clubs of Hamilton does, and has been doing, like I mentioned, for 70 years now in Hamilton. We do a lot at our clubs, we do a lot at our clubs, and our clubs, we have locations at East Avenue, on Grand Boulevard, and most recently with our partnership with Hamilton City Schools at Highland Elementary as well, and continuing to provide access to families for our programming is my number-one priority. And so, we, we don't just have the kids in the clubs and watch them until they get picked up, that's, we do so much more. We provide a healthy snack, we provide mentorship, we make sure that they're on track academically, we give them opportunities to serve in the community, and... And we make sure that all the kids who come to our clubs are prepared to be successful citizens wherever they decide to live their life. That's the, that's one, that's I think a very important thing to focus on. All the kids that go through Boys and Girls Clubs of Hamilton program have soft skills. They're more successful in their career, in their career of choice because they know how to resolve conflict. They know how to work with others. They know how to speak with someone face to face and shake a hand. Those are the types of things that we're doing every day. Working with people different than yourself to resolve conflict and create a successful environment. We have an incredible, incredible team at Boys and Girls Club. That's the first thing I want to say. And these are their values that they decided. We did a retreat not too long ago and these are the things that they said should be, should we should be living every day at Boys and Girls Clubs of Hamilton. And so teamwork, memories, friendship, family, and fun. Those, that's the experience that we provide youth and teens every day at our, our locations. I want to share a little bit about our summer program, which this summer it was incredible. Before I give you the numbers, I would love to share just some of the photos. So just take a minute and read those words and see the youth and teens in the community that got to and be involved in our program. They experienced cultural education. They became engineers. They learned about hydroelectric power. They, some of them learned swimming for the first time. We had a lot of great volunteers come into our program who taught science experiments, project-based learning. So these are the types of things that are happening at Boys and Girls Clubs. And that happened this summer. It was an incredible summer for our youth, for our staff. And I tell you, we were on the waitlist the entire summer. So there is more work to do. There is more potential to serve more youth in the city of Hamilton. And we're happy to come alongside the city and our businesses to make that possible. I know some people are not picture and story people. Some people are data people and numbers. So I want to share some of those numbers. We had 11 weeks of programming. We were open Monday through Friday, 7:30 to 5:30 a.m. So we were open 10 hours a day all summer. This is the first time this organization, Boys and Girls Clubs of Hamilton, has made that, those hours for families. And I think that's important so that families can go to work and so that families don't have to worry about getting to a, a summer camp provider or an after-school provider to pick their child up and it doesn't conflict with their work schedule. All of this costs $0 for families. I'm going to repeat that. It was a full day program, five days a week, that cost $0 for families. Cost us about $6,000 per child to run that program. And so, I think as a city, one of the things that I love about Hamilton is that it's growing and it's exciting and there's opportunity. But I also know that when families move here, one of the first things they're looking for is affordable childcare. And not just affordable childcare, but free childcare in most situations so that they can work, so they can go to college, so they can find jobs here and stay here and build their family. And so that $0 cost is a big deal for families. And a lot of, a lot of programs might scholarship costs, but, you know, sometimes that is a difficult thing for families to say, "I need help." And so at Boys and Girls Clubs, we welcome everybody. On average, our youth were in the program for eight and a half hours a day, which was huge, which was huge. So they weren't just coming in for an hour and getting a snack and then leaving. They were there the entire day. In fact, we made it a requirement that youth who are in the program were there by 10 a.m. every day minimum. And most of them were at the door knocking at 7:15, waiting for the doors to open for our summer program. They went on 26 field trips. And all of that equals about 33,000 hours of service this summer for youth and teens in the city of Hamilton, which we're very proud of. In addition to serving 8,000 healthy meals. And I would be remiss if I did not mention our incredible education teacher, Ms. Jean, gave away 1,000 books. So we put 1,000 books of hand, in, in hands of youth and teens in Hamilton as well. This study was done by University of Ohio University and it saw that when every dollar invested into Boys and Girls Clubs yields an $11.50 economic return to their community. That means parents are working. That means those teens are becoming employees in that city. That means that the livability of those communities are getting better. So investing in every dollar for Boys and Girls Clubs basically has an $11.50 match in economic return to the local communities. We are on a journey. We are on a mission and we are going to achieve this mission to serve 1,000 youth a day. And that's starting from today. And that's about increasing access. And so for us at Boys and Girls Clubs of Hamilton, that doesn't necessarily mean building new facilities. That means partnering. That means working with existing brick and mortars, Hamilton City School District, and other local entities to partner with existing facilities and put programs in those facilities. It's a lot more cost effective, but more important to me, youth get access to programming today. A lot of the time, people might launch a major capital campaign to build or purchase a, a brand new facility. In the five to six years that that's happening, what's happening to the youth and teens that don't have anywhere to go still? That's my question. And as long as I'm here, that's always going to be my question, is what are we doing for our kids today? And I ask that question because it's important, because of numbers like this. From National Suicide Prevention, they showed that 20% of teens reported that they had thoughts of suicide. And of those 20% of teens, half of them actually attempted to take their own lives. So I think most people in our community would agree, maybe there might be some disagreement, that youth and teens are our most precious resource. Our future is our most precious resource. I would hope most people would agree on that. And so if they're our most precious resource, what are we doing to protect them? What are we doing to give them access to mental health? What are we doing to give them access, support? What are we doing to access, for mentors? And what sort of things are we putting in place to ensure that this number is a lot lower and doesn't exist? I have one answer. This stat is from our National Youth Outcomes Initiative Survey of youth right here in Hamilton showed that 94% of club members report that they're able to build relationships and connections with people who are different than them. So number one way to combat suicide, depression is not having people feel isolated. So when you build community, you build resilience, you get numbers like this. And we get rid of numbers like 20% of teens have thought about committing suicide or attempted suicide. And we have to continue to not be afraid of these numbers or to say that maybe they were just having a bad day when they did this survey. Take the, we have to listen to our teens and our youth and really listen and put plans in place to correct the things that they're telling us. Please don't, one of the things I ask people all the time is do not discredit what our youth and what our teens are telling us. Or just chalk it up as they're a child, they're a teen, they don't know. We have to listen. That's their reality. And when we listen, I think we can go forward to improve their life so that they can be more functional as adults. So, for us, we are taking a very strategic and specific approach to improving the work that we do every day, improving the access and improving the people who are involved in our program. These are our three pillars for strategic success. They are our world-class clubs. We want all clubs to be, all facilities that our youth have to be at the highest level of quality. Our programs, we want our programs to be the very best thing. And we want the, that the people who are bringing around our youth and teens to be the best. Because like I mentioned, and I started at the beginning of this presentation, I believe that our kids deserve the best here in Hamilton. And we have to continue to have conversations to provide those. And so, I'd like to first mention that it takes everyone to accomplish these things. It takes the, the city, it takes our donors, it takes our volunteers, our staff, our board members to really go forward on behalf of youth. This summer, we put up a new fence at our Grand Boulevard and clubhouse, which is, has been incredible. It's completely changed the way we can use that location. A very large fence. So please drive past there if you have not yet. But now we have this huge field where we can put raised flower beds, where we can have a football field put in, a composite football field, where we can have a playground go in. And we can change the way that the community feels about that facility. And I think for our grand club, that can really be somewhere where people are really proud of, that facility in that, on the east side of town. And I want to thank the, the city for that. Part of the funding for the fence was received through a community block grant in addition to private donors. At our, at our east club, we're making plans to renovate as well. Again, our facility, we've been in the community for 70 years. Both of those buildings are about 50 and 60 years old respectively. And so it's time to, for the community to make an investment and for us to all figure out how we can give the kids in those communities the very best they deserve. At Highland, it was, we're, through our first year of programming at Highland, for a program that started in the middle of the year, we had 50 kids every day attending Highland. And what our national office has said is if you started a program in the middle of the year and you got 50, you better expect 100, 120 during the school year. So that's what we're aiming for, for Highland Elementary for this year. And I think that that's been such a great relationship with Hamilton City School District. And we're looking to continue that relationship as well at other locations throughout the city. And then last, on our, on our clubs, we're, we want youth that don't know about or don't have transportation or access to our clubs to be able to experience what a club feels like. And so for us, that became a mobile club. So recently, we received three vehicles through, through a, through a grant through the state where we can go to, now go out into community rural parts of our city, rural parts of our area, where we can provide that on the weekends. You'll see our mobile clubs at soccer games. You'll see our mobile clubs at the flea in the future. You'll see our mobile clubs everywhere around town because getting that message out to our families, as soon as somebody knows that it's a free after-school and summer program, I mean, that pretty much sells itself, right? But then all the great things that we do on top of that really sells it. As I mentioned, part of our approach is putting great people around our youth. So first and foremost, I mentioned this earlier, we have an incredible staff. We have staff who have just started this year. We have staff who have been in our organization for 26 years. And 26 years of committed to developing families, youth in Hamilton. And they come every day with a smile on, ready to go, ready to be a mentor for the youth and they set aside what they have to do. So if any of you guys are watching, you're doing an amazing job every day. And I want to thank our board of directors. We have a number of board directors. Would you guys raise your hand, our board that's here? Just go ahead and raise your hand, some of our board members who are in the house tonight. We have, I mean, I think second to none, we have an, we have an incredible board of people, of leaders in the community, some of which have been on the board for a very long time. I won't tell specific numbers of everyone, but some of which are brand new and they're excited. And they're just as excited as everyone is about where the city is going. But they know that we have to improve access and we have to improve what's happening in our clubs and make it more accessible for kids throughout the city to grow our city. And then the one thing I'll encourage people with before we go on to our last pillar is that, find a way to be involved. There's a way for everyone to be involved. You can volunteer. You can serve on one of our committees. You can become a donor. You can come and take a club tour and just see what this is all about. I would encourage anyone who feels moved to serve youth or thinks that Boys and Girls Clubs' mission is important to get involved. And then our last pillar is our life enriching programs. This summer, we had an incredible partnership with Dorana Hybrid that saw our teens and youth go throughout the city to learn where power comes from, to wire their own circuits, to learn CAD. And they designed their own project that Dorana cut for them. It was incredible. You sure saw it on TV Hamilton. Probably most folks saw the unveiling of their project, but without, I don't know about manufacturing. I don't know about CAD. That's not my wheelhouse. And so we want to involve the people who are best at what they're best at, what they're passionate about, to be a part of Boys and Girls Clubs and contribute to our youth and teens, what you're best at. What are you passionate about? Come in and teach a class. Come in and volunteer. And then one of the last program I'll touch on is our teen program. Really taking a focused initiative to make sure that we're serving more teens. Our Alpha Omega Teen Program, it's not affiliated with the Greek Letter Society, but Alpha beginning, Omega end. We want to make sure that from the time that youth walk into our doors, that they feel welcome and that they feel a part of a club experience until it's time for them to go on to school, until it's time for them to start that job at that trade. And then beyond that, feel welcome to come back. Those are, I mean, those are the three pillars. That's the plan. I like to let people in on the plan. My board says that I'm transparent to a fault. But if I don't tell everyone what we're doing and let them know, how can you be a part? And how can you really understand what's happening? We, those are people that know me, know that you can't get away from me without hearing about one of our club members, about one of the club members I've had the pleasure of working with in my past 13 years, working with Boys and Girls Clubs. My first day on the job, I had a difficult task. There is a, a young man named Donnell who is in our clubs. And I was told that my first job was to kick him out. And I was like, whoa, I just started. I was a teacher. I stopped being a teacher because I didn't want to send youth out the door into an unknown environment every day. That's why I started at Boys and Girls Clubs. I don't want to kick him out. And I said, "Well, can we try to work on a different plan besides suspend him or kick him out of the club?" And they said, "Well, if you want to do that, that's your responsibility." And so I had him start volunteering. He worked in the concession stand during basketball games. And at the end of that season, I was proud to hand him a check for $1,000. And he said, "What do I do with this check?" And I said, "Well, you put it in your bank account." And he said, "I don't have a bank account." So, okay, so now we had to figure out how to open up a bank account. So Donnell then volunteered coached basketball for us at the club. He even volunteered coached soccer that he knew nothing about, but he was willing to do, coach soccer for our younger kids because he just wanted to be a part. I went, one of the times I went home recently, he contacted back, home back to Chicago to visit my family and he reached out and he said, "I want to take you to dinner." And I was like, "You want to take me to dinner?" He said, "Yeah, because I want to tell you about what I'm doing." I said, "Okay." It's going to be a nice place because you put me through a lot of headache and stress. No, I was just joking. And I'm going to order dessert too, probably. And he said, "That's okay." And so he told, he had told me that after he is, after he left the Boys and Girls Club, that he went on to be an officer for the US Army and that he actually worked Border Patrol for five years. And now he was, he's actually a police officer for Michigan City Police Department up in Northwest Indiana. And that, he shared with me that if it wasn't for the club, if it wasn't for someone being a mentor in his life, he had lost his father at a young age. And he kind of was the father role model for his siblings, that he didn't know if that, if he would accomplish the things that he's accomplished in life without Boys and Girls Club. And so when I tell you that, all youth have different needs. All youth are not from a single parent household. All youth are not from a difficult socioeconomic situation. But they all have needs. And we have to meet those as a community. And so the last thing that I'll leave you with is when you invest in youth and teens, you unlock potential. And if you don't invest in youth and teens, you have to deal with that problem in a much different way. So I would rather always be proactive and invest in our youth so that we can re, help them realize their potential, so they can be a part of the community and help the community go forward. Thank you.
That's a lot. Presented us with some challenges and some ways to help out your club.
Yes, of course. I, I mean, like I said, the kids in Hamilton deserve the absolute best. And I thank all of you for letting me share a little bit about our mission and a little bit about our direction of our organization. And the city has been so welcoming to my family. And we, I mean, my fiance and I are getting married here. We purchased a house here. She got a Baden green shirt because we live closer to Baden. So I got the blue shirts that we can go out in public together and people won't be upset. And so, no, we just love that we get to call Hamilton, Ohio, our home. So thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, please.
If I could just say a couple of things. Tommy, thank you for your presentation. You and I talked earlier this summer at Jefferson Park. You were at a 17-strong event. And I can't count how many times I have run into you. I know you have programs, you know, early morning till evening, but you have been everywhere. So thank you. I know you were at our Neighborhood Summit. You have really immersed yourself. And when you said, "I've only been here a year," I was surprised because it seems like much longer. So thank you for what you're doing.
Of course. Of course. Yeah, a year in October.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I had the opportunity to stop into the facility on Grand Boulevard the other day and was shown around by Coach. Your impact is immense and you are doing great things. I have, I worked for the YMCA Youth Department and it was, it was very energizing to see the structured programs that you had going, going on in that facility that were working and how engaged your kids were. And I think that you should be very proud of it. I appreciate your presence here.
Thank you and thank you for your support of being involved in our clubs. And thank you for inviting our club members out to participate in the, the Baden Football Camp. That was an experience that they've never had before. And I love connecting our kids to the community in ways that they've never been connected before. So thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I'll give you time to think of an answer. But you're the second person who has stood before us and said, we need to have things for young people to do in the community. If you could give us a list of ideas of what you mean. Because we talk about it often and we have ideas, but we're not kids, we don't have kids. But if you could share something, but maybe send it to Daniel that he can send with us, I would really be curious what we could do.
Sure. Yeah, I'd be happy to. I'll send you a list tonight.
Thank you.
Because we want to be partners with Boys and Girls Club and the other organizations here in this city. Know that youth, all youth, like you said, succeed. Anybody else? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we now go to Audience of Citizens? Individuals who wish to speak, may they comment during this part of the agenda or they can reserve the right to speak when an item is up for voting on council floor. Individuals who want to address city council are required to sign this blue public speaking book. Each speaker is allowed up to five minutes. And we're going to go by the order of signing. Andrew Kahn, you were first. Give us your name and your address and the subject you want to address.
Andrew Kahn, seven oh seven Foster Avenue. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of Hamilton City Council and citizens of Hamilton. We have a rich military history here in Hamilton. From the construction of Fort Hamilton under the leadership of General Arthur St. Clair, through every war and military action around the globe, Hamilton, Ohio has played an important role. As you recall, earlier this year, we installed military banners all around the city to recognize those brave men and women who represented the area and fought for this great nation. To honor the soldiers that paid the ultimate price and gave their life for this country, their banners are displayed prominently on the High Street Main Street Bridge. At this year's Memorial Day Ceremony, standing on the steps of the Soldier, Sailor and Pioneer's Monument, referring to those same banners, Mr. Mayor, you said, and I don't have the exact quote, but something to the effect of, with the banners that have fallen on the High Street Main Street Bridge, I look at that as a monument now as well. And Mr. Mayor, I couldn't agree more. And I think it's time for the next step to be taken to make that happen. I mentioned this to a few of you already, but I wanted to come before council and make my request official. I'm here tonight to propose renaming the High Street Main Street Bridge or Main Street High Street Bridge, depending on where you live, which way you're coming from, to the Veterans Memorial Bridge to officially make it a monument. I'm not sure what the process is for that, but I would be honored to be, to be involved in that so we can make this lasting tribute happen. Thank you for, thank you for your time.
Thank you. You have mentioned it to a few of us and probably Councilmember Nab has heard that. The idea of putting something on that bridge, signifying and stating that those who are, have banners on that bridge were all killed in action, I think is a great idea. Whether it's, it's a renaming, whether it's putting up a silent DC on the highways for those who have passed by, by giving all, I think it's a good idea to do something on that bridge because that bridge is now a monument. Councilmember Nab, you want to say anything?
That I would agree. And Andrew, thank you for the presentation tonight. And we'll, we can go through a process. As, as the mayor said, and we know, there is an actual process to take in, in, in joining the name of a new bridge and of a street in honor of our veterans and honor of fallen veterans. So I'd be glad to have you join us, part of our committee of what we do when we started the Veterans Hall of Fame, as well as our, our Hamilton Veterans Hometown Heroes Program and things like that. So let's get together and we, we'd be glad to go continue this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't think I said John Barry, I think I said Chris Haynes. Thank you, John, for being here. Talking about veterans who, who have part of the history of this city. Chris Haynes is one of those veterans who is part of the history, veteran history in this city. I know, I think Councilmember Nab mentioned the Veterans Hall of Fame. This man created the Veterans Hall of Fame. It was his vision to do it. He's on the banner committee, worked the yeoman's effort in that banner committee. That's Councilmember Nab. But Chris Haynes, I don't want to, you're here to speak to us.
That's okay, Mayor, you're fine. Keep going, don't. But, you know, I'll give you my name again, Chris Haynes, and I'll give you the address. I'm at at least a little over eight hours a day, that's twenty-two ten South Erie Boulevard, to City Garage. So as a twenty-five-year employee here at the city, you know, I'm very proud of where I came from, where I was born at. And as I was, thought about coming here and speaking tonight, I, I couldn't believe it was a little over ten years ago that I came before this body and asked for the city's, you know, the councils and your guys' support to, to run through the, to, to the office of, of the VFW State Commander. You know, it's hard to believe it's been, you know, ten years ago since that took place. You know, two thousand fifteen, I had sixteen, I had the opportunity to serve as the State Commander of the VFW, something I've been a member of for the last thirty-two years. You know, since I, since I finished up Desert Storm and came home and came here with the city. But, so I come before you again tonight because my, my, my goal's not finished. You know, and I don't want to sound selfish here in front of everybody, but I think there's some other leadership opportunities I have within the, the VFW to, to serve more. And a few weeks ago in, in, in Phoenix, Arizona, at our VFW National Convention, I, I announced my candidacy to, to ultimately run for the National Commander Chief of the organization. So again, that's a ten-year commitment. You know, there's three years of campaigning ahead of me throughout the Midwest states, nine other states that I have to gain delegates from as a majority, serve three chairs, the Junior Vice Commander Chief first, the Senior Vice, and then ultimately Commander Chief, you know. So, so again, you know, I take the pride of Hamilton along with me everywhere I go throughout these states. You know, a proud member of, of this city, as an employee of the city and, and, you know, where I was born and raised at. So again, I just come before you tonight to, to ask for your encouragement. You know, it's, it's a long, arduous process, it's a lot of traveling, those kind of things. But, but again, just to, to let my employer know my intentions and, and go forward and seek this high office of, of, of an organization I dearly love. So thank you.
Well, I want to say that I think the whole city administration wishes you the absolute best. We support you. You used to work commitment. You have been committed to improving the lives of veterans as long as I've known you. And that's a long time. And you had your years as being in the service on top of that. So you are, you are committed to helping your fellow veterans. And I know where you go, you take Hamilton, you take Hamilton veterans with you.
Correct.
Honestly, I believe you deserve a proclamation for what you have, what you have accomplished. And I'm, I'm going to mention your wife as well because his wife is also at all these veterans events, promoting the things that veterans do need when they come home. And that's a big part of VFW is providing benefits for those who come home. Because it's, it's a credible disruption in people's lives to join and, and it does affect them sometimes coming home.
Yeah, it does. It does. You know, as a passion, you know, you got to have a passion for it. And again, a commitment to, to not only serve your community, but make sure veterans are taken care of. You know, we have to fight that fight every day in the halls of Congress. So, you know, that's, that's what we're, we're challenged to do and that's what we stand up to do. But, you know, going back to something that was discussed a little earlier also, the, the Baden-Hamilton football game. You know, I'm a, I'm a Big Blue alumni, but I am from a house divided with my wife and kids. It was Baden graduates, so go Blue. But I, you know, if anybody's got a question, I'd be happy to answer everything you may have for me. But again, I just, you know, I just come here to ask for your encouragement and, you know, keep me motivated.
Hey, we'll keep you motivated, you keep us motivated, make sure we're doing the right things for veterans. And I forgot to mention, you also put a P O W chair at the,
Yes.
at the Hamilton High School, where Hamilton High School and Baden have played. So I just, I just know that you are committed to assisting veterans and I wish you the best of luck.
Yeah, we look forward to doing whatever we can to help out with the renaming of the bridge too. So, you know, we're, we're there to help that out. And also the, the dedication, hopefully in the near future of the Anthony Crest Memorial Highway out there and, uh, working on, working on that also. So, but again, thanks for all you guys do here for the city. We're, we're great to see the great things happening.
And you're also assisted the vintage family for,
Yes.
for getting a Memorial Highway market for them.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Chris, thank you for, for your encouragement, for all of us on council that, that serve on various committees and, and support all of our veterans.
Yep.
Importantly, as, as we've shared tonight, our Veterans Hall of Fame that we established five, now going on six years ago, that, that will be held this November on, on Sunday, November the fifth, at the, at the Butler County Fairgrounds, where we will honor the new class of, of veterans who have served. And, and those important people coming back to Hamilton that have made their lives, who have made Hamilton a special place. But then the committee moved forward this past November and created our Veterans Banners Program. We have one hundred and twenty-six banners hanging in Hamilton now. We have interest in over eighty new banners for the, what we'll call the Class of Two Thousand and Twenty-four. And those banners, those applications will become available through the Chamber of Commerce, the Community Foundation, the City of Hamilton website, and, one, I'm missing one other one. But importantly, the, the application process, it's a two-page application for the honorees to be remembered with a banner in all past service to our country. So stay tuned for watching. I'm sure the Journal News will run another ad. TV Hamilton has been a great partner in supporting the banner program. So those patrons, I had a lady call me today asking about a banner. And I explained that November will reopen the application process and that application will stay open until next March. And then we'll have the banners made in April. They'll be re-hung by Armed Forces Day in May to support the other one hundred and twenty-six banners that are here. So again, Chris, but for you, thank you for all you do.
Well, you know, we hope to have a thousand banners hanging in this town over the next couple of years. So what, what a sight that would be. So, but again, appreciate all, everything. So thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Last, we have Reverend Victor Davis. And as you come up here. Wearing a Pittsburgh Steelers shirt. In honor of Rich Engel.
No, no shame in the game.
Okay. Reverend Davis, did you want to talk about the zoning? Because we got a zoning hearing tonight about second ward zone.
I don't know where it's going to fall in. I tried to look at the agenda. Got a major question. I'm keep, first of all, Mr. Mayor and members of council, thank you for allowing me to speak. Got a major concern going on. As you know, I'm keenly aware of most of the things that happen in the city and I try to give as much as I can to assist. But I've got a major issue that never seems to get answered. The deplorable condition of some of the houses. And there's one owner, one, there are three pieces of property stand out and the city's done nothing about them. And they've, they've been vacant for over thirty years on Walnut Street. Within the last two weeks, you tore down one house. There's a house directly next to it. It's in the same condition, been there thirty years, empty. On the corner, it looks like a jungle. And if nobody knows, I took pictures so you can see it. If that were my property or anybody else, it'd be all hell would break loose. There are rats, there are wild cats, you name it, coming in that property. The city or someone put, pardon me, put cones in the alley at Martin Luther King and Walnut. The cones have been there for a month. The roof is falling in completely. Now what's going to happen when a person walks through that alley or a child tries to go through there and that falls on them, ain't harm them or kill them? It's the city's responsibility. There are two vehicles on the property. It's so covered with vegetation, you can hardly see them. The house next, I own property at four twenty-one Walnut, it's my family home. I can't put money into it. The insurance companies don't want to insure it at the rate it should be because of the property next to it. This city put notices on that property years ago. Tore down the front, poured a slab porch and nothing else been done. There's beams hanging off the house, there's all kinds of things. And I've been told it's used as a residence. I know better. Their, their residents live there, know that nobody lives there. All of these years, I'd like to know what the city's doing. And I know the Health Department, the inspections, I know that's down because of staffing. But this is an eyesore and anybody can see it. And I, I'd like somebody to address that issue because I've mentioned it to city council persons.
Can we just have some kind of report on, on what's going on?
And I can tell you the name of the owner.
Can, actually, can you just provide just the, the addresses? You said there was two properties?
It's, it's three properties.
Three, okay.
It's one is four, it should be four nineteen, I think, because my property is four twenty-one. The other one would be directly across the street. And I don't know the address, but you should know that because one was just torn down a week or so ago. And then the other one is at the corner of Martin Luther King and Walnut, which would probably be, I'm assuming that's four twenty-seven or something. No, because it faces Martin Luther King. So I don't know what the actual address would be.
Oh, I see it now.
Years ago, I got a ticket for not painting a garage that had been vandalized and I had to go to court. Went to court, it was thrown out because I showed proof of what I was getting ready to do to remodel it. But nothing has done to this for over thirty years, folks. And everybody here ought to know that name because I've been told by city that the name pops up all the time. He's willing to take the city to court. If everybody's scared to say the name, I'm not Nick DeGarmo.
Hold on a second, Reverend Davis. We can get some kind of report, get update on what's going on.
Yes, I'm going to, I'm going to have Aaron step. I just want to make sure I have all the right addresses. I, I see four nineteen now on, on street view and it's in pretty deplorable shape. But I just want to make sure I, I have all the right addresses. We'll certainly, I'll, I'll personally call you tomorrow with an update.
Thank you.
There you go.
Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Actives care of citizens, Audience of Citizens, we now go to the consent agenda. That includes all staff reports, caucus reports, June twenty-twenty-three financial report, June twenty-twenty-three investment report. But we're going to Committee of the Whole, which is intended to allow city council to, to kind of informally ask questions and provide some direction and comments. I'll set the motion to regular meeting be recessed and the Committee of the Whole take place. Second, motion, Mayor Councilmember Pullman, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Home favorite, please say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, carry none, the motion is carried. The time is seven thirty. The caucus agenda, please.
Absolutely. So the first two items on the caucus agenda for the Committee of the Whole will be presented by our Executive Director of Internal Services, Mr. Tim Wordman.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, citizens. First item that I'm going to be talking about is proposed legislation related to the Ross Township JED. You'll recall, or maybe you won't recall because it's been a while, but in two thousand twenty-one, you passed legislation to basically approve moving forward with this Ross Township JED. That's a map of the area that we're talking about in Ross Township. Now we've gotten to the point where we have to, I'm not pointing this.
I got you.
Do one, I think, two, actually two, it'll be two pieces of legislation at the next meeting. One of them is to, well, actually go back to the background. So, but as I said, we approved the, I'm sorry, I said background. Sorry. We approved the first piece of legislation in two thousand twenty-one. The JED agreement itself provides for a ninety-five-five split of income taxes as well as a three percent administrative service fee to be paid to the city as reimbursement for our expenses for collecting. And it also establishes a JED board with one board member to be appointed by the City of Hamilton. I put in my caucus report that we would recommend just appointing Councilman Pullman because he is already on the JED board for Fairfield Township. I figured that would be the easiest thing to do. If council has a different opinion on that, I'd be happy to write the legislation differently. But that seemed to make sense to me since we already had him set up for the Fairfield Township JED board. So you'll see that at the next council meeting, a piece of legislation appointing Councilman Pullman. And then the other piece. Is to designate RITA, which is a regional income tax agency that we have for our collection of income taxes here in the City of Hamilton as the collection agent for the JED. So those are two separate pieces of legislation that you'll get at the next council meeting. And I think that should then complete all the legislative action that needs to be taken to complete the Ross Township JED moving forward. Any questions on that?
Any questions? Thank you.
The next caucus report I have is for a piece of legislation to amend Schedule A of the city's compensation and classification plan. Schedule A, I will go without slides, I think I can do this, is the compensation for non-union employees of the City of Hamilton. And what we are proposing is a lump sum payment to be added to that to allow for people that are at the top of the pay range who would otherwise not receive an increase if they get a performance evaluation that is satisfactory or above, to get some form of remuneration to reward them for high performance. What ends up happening is we've got over 50% of Schedule A employees by next year that will be at the top of their pay range. If you're not at the top of the pay range and you get a satisfactory or better performance evaluation, you move up a step in your pay range, so you get rewarded for that. We have a lot of employees that are senior employees, including a lot of the directors that you see at these meetings, who have been here for a long time and therefore they're at the top of the pay ranges already. What we would like to do is have a lump sum payment equal to what they would otherwise have gotten as a step increase. It won't increase their base rate, but it'll be a lump sum payment that they would receive that would be equal in dollars to what they would receive as a step. And we hope that that will allow us to retain some of the talented employees that we have that have been here for a long time, have organizational knowledge, that frankly, we want to keep around to keep the momentum going that we've had in the city. So that's the bottom line. You would see legislation, it would be an emergency, we would hope, to have two readings at the next meeting if possible, and have that implemented so that the lump sum payment could be paid for the pay period in September because the folks that are not topped out have already received their step increases based on the performance evaluations that we did in June generally. So any questions on that? I'd be happy to.
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Then next up for agenda item number three from our finance department, Ms. Tamika Hedrington.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council.
I'll get, oh, I got you.
I am presenting the acceptance appropriation and budget of community development block grant and home investment partnership program funds for fiscal year 2324. This past spring, council approved the plan itself. We then submitted that plan to HUD, and they approved the plan on January 6. As such, I'm here now asking that council accept, approve, and appropriate the funds for the proposed projects that include, but are not limited to, home repair and housing programs, public facility improvements, economic development, demolition and clearance, public services, activity delivery, and administration costs. The finance department, again, requests that council approve, appropriate, and budget the plans, the plan in the amounts of $1,625,998 for CDBG and $517,887 for home funds. Some of the subrecipients that we will be administering funds to include fitness center, neighborhood housing services, self, the YWCA, YMCA, Surf City, and the City of Hamilton departments will also benefit from those funds. Here's a very detailed list of just dollar-for-dollar breakdown of where the funds going. I know it's difficult to see, but it's a lot. That's for CDBG, and the last slide is for home. Finance department recommends that city council approve, appropriate, and budget fiscal year 2324 CDBG funds as well as home funds. CDBG in the amount of $1,625,998 and home in the amount of $517,887. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item number four, caucus report from our Director of Utility Operations, Mr. Bill Hudson.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm here to request waiving the codified ordinance for advertising buying purchased parts for our GIS system at, I'm sorry, unit at Greenup Facility. It's how the power that's generated at the plant gets put out on the grid. We're in a modernization project at the plant now. I want to replace the cabling going out, if you can go to the next slide, please, so you can see how it connects to the equipment. We've got the cable purchase, we've got terminators for it to connect to it, but with this older equipment, which is approximately 45 years old, GE has to make a specialized adapter so we can connect to it. Now, the old method of doing it, you can't buy old parts anymore, so you have to have something specially made to adapt to it. So I'm just asking to waive the requirements for advertising since GE is the only one that makes this part to keep the project going.
Right.
That's all, Mayor. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
And finally, for items five, six, and seven, we will have our Planning Director, Ms. Liz Hayden.
Good evening, City Council and residents of Hamilton. The first item that I have for you tonight is an update to Plan Hamilton. Every year, we try to partner with the Miami Plannings Class to do a neighborhood plan. And this year, they did a plan for the East Avenue corridor, and they did a great job. And we worked with residents and other stakeholders in the neighborhood. And you can see on the slide the scope of the plan that they put together, where they looked at. And there was a wide variety of things in the plan, but I wanted to highlight three things, which was first, economic development for the district. There are some really, really great small businesses on East Avenue, but there are also a number of vacant properties or underutilized properties. And so they really targeted how to reactivate some of these spaces that could be great. One idea that we talked about was there are, there's opportunities for, a lot of the buildings used to have a lot more windows and a facade program that would really improve, reactivate those windows would make a huge difference to the look and feel of the neighborhood. We also talked about neighborhood placemaking, and so you'll see some examples of what things we discussed. The seating is, was something that we discussed in the plan that was actually specific. It wouldn't be just general seating. It was an idea of a place like Garcia's, which is this wonderful asset. Could they benefit, you know, it's not just a grocery store. You can go in and get food to eat for lunch or dinner, you know? Wouldn't it be great if they had an outdoor patio area nearby that could really bring some vibrance, some positive vibrancy associated with the business? So that was that idea. Of course, every, it's always great to think about adding more murals. And then there's one very clear, big vacant lot on East Avenue, and they reimagined it as a park. But there's definitely something, park or otherwise, that something great could happen there to be transformed. Also talked about streetscape improvements, general improvements to the street, but also making sure that it's a high pedestrian and bicycle area, making sure that it's safe for everyone, adding lighting, and then also, you know, that same idea that we talked about with Garcia's, if an off-street parking, if an off-street patio isn't possible, maybe a parklet for outdoor dining associated with a place like Garcia's. Any questions about this one?
Any questions?
The second, the second item from planning tonight is general tax amendments to the zoning ordinance, which you get tired of hearing, I'm sure, but there's always something to update in our code. Most everything in this round is general cleanups and clarifications, but we are updating our penalty section to, we've spent a lot of time with our law department, making sure it's as strong as possible for when people are violating the zoning code, and then also adding a civil citation process. This is something we attempted to do a couple of years ago, didn't do it quite right, so it needed to be tweaked so that we could make it a functional tool in our code. We also change, are proposing to change approvals right now. If somebody goes to one of our, goes to the Board of Zoning Appeals or the Architectural Design Review Board, their approval is for six months. Well, a lot of times, more often than not, actually, if it's a bigger project, they need more time, and then they're coming back for asking for an extension. So we just are saying that they should have a year to finish their project instead of six months. Something that actually came from planning commissioners was to add some additional regulations to car washes. And one of them is to request adding a 2,500-foot buffer distance from each standalone car wash and also require all, all car washes be staffed while they're in operation. We also, this was something we learned through the rezoning process of the Riverview neighborhood, but as we use that traditional neighborhood zoning district more frequently in our neighborhoods, we're learning that we need to tweak some of the uses, and one of them we're recommending is to add contractor and skilled trades with no exterior storage as a conditional use in the TN4 zoning district, which is, it makes a lot of sense because what we're doing is changing the neighborhood business districts from B2, which is the same kind of zoning that our major corridors like Route 4 and Main Street are, to this TN4. They, you know, there's a lot of contractors, small businesses, offices in these areas. And then, again, floodplain section updates, minor tweaks to be in line with state best practices, and general cleanups and clarifications. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, please. Liz, actually, one that kind of strikes me here, and I'm kind of concerned about it, and I guess I missed this, but when you say car wash conditional use, and it's for a standalone car wash and required it to be staffed, these things are 24 hours. So they're requiring, I mean, if I'm thinking of the same type of car wash, the ones you go in and do yourself, right?
Yes, and the reason for that, and we can always, you know, move away from that. Of course, everyone that's open is grandfathered, so they wouldn't be required to abide it up. But what we're seeing is not the do-it-yourself ones, it's staffed model, and the thought process behind that was some of the, some of the ones that are just unstaffed, sometimes I, we've heard safety complaints there.
And I agree with that, but I'm just also for the owner's aspect of it, for them to keep somebody there. If they put a brand-new one up like that standalone, they're going to have to staff somebody there 24 hours a day, seven days a week. That might be a little bit tough for them. I'm just thinking for the future, when, if these are grandfathered, the ones that are in there right now.
They are.
And somebody comes up and puts a, and personally, I don't think a lot of people are going to come up and put the soft wash in there anymore because I think it's pretty much going to the other type. And I'm just thinking of a business guy that comes in here, and it's, it's a good profit maker, but it's not a high profit maker, and you throw a guy in there 24, I mean, they're open 24 hours a day, seven days a week, correct? Most of those?
You might have to educate me. That's not, you typically, the ones that we've been seeing are staffed. I haven't, I don't think we've had any come through in the past five years that haven't been staffed. Maybe I'm not right.
Well, I'm talking like the one, let's just use one over there by Aljos or one by Texas Roadhouse over there. Those are not staffed on ice.
Yeah, and we.
But they're open.
Yeah, I think the thought is that, the planning commission's thought was that there have been safety issues at places like that.
And they do, but I mean, I'm just, having them staffed is quite a bit of expense to an owner. So I think that may have to be rethought about maybe security there, rather than staffing.
That would, that will be, that would be considered.
I, I'm just thinking like an owner. So it's, and I'm worried about taking away from the owner so much.
And again, all the ones that are existing would not need to hire anyone. It's anybody coming in to the community and building new or converting something into a car wash.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Any other questions? Final one from planning, 335 Main Street, conditional use. It's a standalone parking lot, it's the city's applicant, public parking lot nearby the Agave and Rye development, but it's a standalone parking lot, which is a conditional use on Main Street, and there are two variances. One is the driveline width, it's one foot smaller than the, than our requirement, but this would be a small enough change that if it wasn't a conditional use, we'd be able to administratively approve it, and that it's not enclosed by a six-foot-high fence. And here is a plan, if you would like to see what the parking lot is proposed as to look like. It's got exit on, an entrance off Main and also off of E. It's got ADA-accessible parking spaces as well as EV charging stations, lighting, lots of landscaping, and also we'll have a dumpster enclosure that will be associated with Agave and Rye that will have an ease, an exit, an easement on. Any questions on this one?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Liz, are these going to be all metered spaces? When it says public parking, are they metered?
Meant to ask that question today for engineering. I know that there's lots of discussions. I'm not exactly sure if it's for sure going to be paid parking or if that's still in the...
I'm happy to address that question. It's going to have some form of monitoring on it. I'm not sure if it's just going to be three-hour parking that's going to be watched, if it's going to have one of the kiosks that, as an example, we had by the Markham for a while that we get, actually pull the ticket. It will certainly be no more than three to four-hour parking at a time, and it will be a part of the enforcement area for our street, our city-owned parking.
Okay. And the EV spots are pay, is that correct? All of the EVs are, you must pay for those?
Yes.
And in the Armstead Park, do I understand that that one's going to become a paid parking public area? It's a public parking lot as well?
We've had some internal conversations about that, only because with the Rossville Flats opening in the next 45 days or so, it's probably going to put some additional pressure on some of those lots, and we just want to make sure that people aren't parking there for like a day or two days or three days. It cannot be treated as long-term parking. So we'll work with Rich and his team to come up with some type of enforcement plan also for that area.
Okay, thanks. And Agave and Rye does not have designated spots in this lot, is that correct? As a business, is part of it their parking lot?
They do not.
Okay, okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's a summation of our reports, Mayor.
Great. Okay, I'll set the motion to Committee of the Whole be closed.
So moved.
Second. Motion to councilmember NAB, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Home favorite, please say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, hearing none, that motion is carried. The time is 7:51. I'll set the motion to regular meeting be reconvened.
So moved.
Second. Motion to councilmember Pullman, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Rule call vote on that motion, please.
Pullman. Yes. Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
NAB.
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
And that was set 7:52. We now, I'll set the motion that the council receiving reports the consent agenda and concurring their recommendations.
So moved.
Second. First, councilmember Fear, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Ryan, home favorite, please say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, hearing none, that motion is carried. Now go to the public hearing part of the agenda. Now set the motion, that's regular meeting be recessed, and the public hearing take place.
So moved. Second.
Motion to councilmember NAB, second by councilmember Vaughn. Home favorite, please say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, hearing none, that motion is carried. First public hearing, please.
A public hearing regarding ratifying and approving the execution of an interlocal agreement and authorizing the police department to apply for funding for fiscal year 2023 justice assistance. Assistance Grant, JAG, to be used for law enforcement purposes and accepting said grant funds.
Anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving these justice assistance grants? Anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving the justice assistance grants? Anyone? Hold on a second. No one did sign the book either. Anyone on council wish to be heard or accept, or make a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Nab?
I move that the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Councilmember Nab, second by Councilmember Vaughn to close that particular public hearing. Number nine, next public hearing, please. Home favorite, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, same sign. Hearing none. Motion carried. Next one, please.
A public hearing amending the City of Hamilton zoning ordinance number 7503 by changing the zoning of specific properties in the Riverview Second Ward Neighborhood zoning map amendments, changing the zoning on the area in question.
Anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving the amendments to our zoning ordinance? Anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving the changing of our zoning ordinance for these neighborhoods? Anyone on council wish to be heard or wish to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Vaughn?
I move the public hearing be closed.
Second. First my Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Pullman. Home favorite, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, same sign. Hearing none. That motion is carried. We, the first public hearing was over with at 7:53. This one is over with at 7:54. I'll set the motion to regular meeting be reconvened.
So moved.
Second. First my Councilmember Nab, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Rule call vote to reconvene the regular meeting.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
And that's also at 7:54. Now go to council actions pertaining to legislative items and I'll set the motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Pullman?
I move that a note be made upon the minute that each member of council was furnished a printed copy of each item of legislation prior to its being considered at this meeting.
Second.
First my Councilmember Pullman, second by Councilmember Fear. Home favorite, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, same sign. Hearing none. That motion is carried at 7:55. We now go to actions pertaining to legislative items pending legislation, second reading of emergency ordinance involving 20 High Street.
An emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a sale and development agreement, property conveyances and related actions related to certain real property located at 20 High Street located in the city's urban renewal area. City of Hamilton seller Acumen Development Partners LLC and Spectrum Investment Group LLC developers, second reading.
Mr. Mayor? Vice Mayor Ryan, I move that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
First my Vice Mayor Ryan, second by Councilmember Lauer. Discussion or comment on this one? Hearing none. Rule call vote, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, 7-0.
All right, we go to the next one. I just want to make sure that I mentioned that the second public hearing involving the zoning map amendments, there were nobody who signed that public hearing. We now go to number 11, second reading of an ordinance involving permanent utility easement.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute the purchase of a permanent utility easement at 251 Thero Drive located within the City of Hamilton, Ohio. Jeffrey K. and Kimberly R. Huff, property owner, City of Hamilton purchaser, second reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Vaughn?
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Fear. Any discussion or comments? Rule call vote on that one, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, 7-0.
Good, we go to gen item number 12, second reading of an ordinance involving home program or funds.
An ordinance amending, appropriating, and budgeting up to $1,400,858 for fiscal year 2021 through 2022 home partnerships investment program, American Rescue Plan Funds, second reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Pullman?
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
First my Councilmember Pullman, second by Councilmember Nab. Any discussion on this one? Hearing none. Rule call vote.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, 7-0.
We now go to new legislation, agenda item number 13, first reading of an ordinance involving amending, say, Hamilton ordinances.
An ordinance amending the City of Hamilton zoning ordinance number 7503 by changing the zoning of specific properties in the Riverview Second Ward Neighborhood zoning map, changing the zoning on the area in question from a mixture of residential and commercial districts to a TN, traditional neighborhood, and specific properties to B2, community business, OPD, office plan development, and RPD, residential plan development properties situated in the Second Ward, City of Hamilton, City of Hamilton applicant, first reading.
Thank you. We go to gen item number 14, first reading of an emergency ordinance involving our sanitary sewer main impact fee.
An emergency ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio by amending section 935.10 sanitary sewer main impact connection fee, cost participation, and system capacity charge to amend the fee collection process, first reading.
Thank you. We go to gen item number 15, first reading of an ordinance involving real property tax abatement and Vision AWH LLC.
An ordinance authorizing a real property tax abatement within the Main High Corridor Community Reinvestment Area for the purpose of encouraging economic development within that area and authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a community reinvestment area agreement with Vision AWH LLC, first reading.
Thank you. Gen item number 16, an ordinance involving Hamilton City School District and a fifth agreement.
An ordinance declaring the improvement to a certain parcel of real property within the city to be, to be a public purpose and exempt from taxation pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, section 5709.41, providing for the collection and deposit of service payments specifying the purposes for which those service payments may be expended, authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a school compensation agreement with the Hamilton City School District and authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a tax increment financing agreement, first reading.
Thank you. We go to gen item number 17, first reading of an ordinance involving transfer of certain real property.
An ordinance approving the transfer of certain real property located within the City of Hamilton, Ohio, associated with the construction of the Butler County Regional Highway, State Route 129, between State Route 4, Erie Boulevard, and the East Corporation Limits. Lot number 30108, 30109, 30110, 30105, 30106, 26381, 26377, 26376, 26375, 26374, 26373, 26372, 26112, part of lot number 25996, lot number 26113, part of lot number 26386, 26114, part of lot 25996, lot number 26497, 26498, part of lot number 26386, part of lot number 25996, lot number 3011, part of lot number 29040, lot number 12658, part of lot number 12657, part, excuse me, lot number 30112, part of lot number 24712, part of lot number 24712, part of lot number 28406, part of lot number 28406, lot number 24712, 30107, part of lot number 12655, first reading.
Thank you. We now go to gen item number 18, which is a resolution involving the expansion of the Hamilton Community Authority.
A resolution determining that the consent to the expansion of the Hamilton Community Authority to include the Anthony Wayne Hotel complies with the requirements of section 34903 of the Ohio Revised Code and fix a date and place for a public hearing of such expansion.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Vaughn?
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
First my Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Nab. Any comment, questions on this one? Hearing none. Rule call vote.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
We go to gen item number 19, a resolution involving the justice assistance grant.
A resolution ratifying and approving the execution of an interlocal agreement authorizing the police department to apply for funding for fiscal year 2023 Justice Assistance Grant, JAG, and accepting said grant funds to be used for law enforcement purposes.
Mr. Mayor?
Any discussion on this one? Well, good, good. I'm sorry. Councilmember Pullman?
Okay. I'll make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
First my Councilmember Pullman, second by Councilmember Nab. Any discussion on this one? Hearing none. Rule call vote, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
We go to gen item number 20, which is a resolution about real property tax.
A resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to execute an enterprise zone agreement with TLP 2921 McBride LLC relative to real property tax abatement.
Mr. Mayor? Vice Mayor Ryan?
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
First my Vice Mayor Ryan, second by Councilmember Fear. Questions or comments on this resolution? Hearing none. Rule call vote, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
The audience and the city manager?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of photos that our clerk has. Uh, first one I wanted to share with council. This was a groundbreaking ceremony that happened earlier today at Vinyl Max. Um, it's hard to see, but if you squint, uh, with the American flag as the backdrop, that is Jody Gunnison in the middle of that groundbreaking ceremony. I know that Jody spent over two years working on this project to get it to this point. They're essentially doubling their size. It's about a $15 million capital investment. And sometimes I feel that the Hamilton Enterprise Park, since it's not in the middle of Hamilton, a lot of people maybe don't have a reason to go out that direction. Uh, but Jody and his team, um, who really specialize on industrial development, have done just a tremendous job of growing that park, uh, well over $100 million of capital investment in the last four years in the park, uh, which means job creation, which is jobs for our citizens, but it's also taxes that help fund the city services. So I just want to say thank you to Jody for getting this very complex deal over the goal line. Uh, next thing, uh, next photo I have was later in the afternoon, Deputy Chief Shaw was retiring from Hamilton Fire Department, Jeff Shaw, and, um, just a tremendous, tremendous fireman, but even more than that, he's a tremendous person. He was one of the first firemen I met, uh, when I started back in 2010, and that's him standing to the, when you're looking at that photo, he's in the white shirt to the far right. Um, but his coworkers that worked with him felt so highly of him, uh, that they gave him that ax today as a, uh, which I think in the fire profession is about like the highest sign of respect that you could probably provide a fireman. But, um, but Director Scobie and I were there this afternoon, uh, for that ceremony. But I just want to wish, uh, Chief Shaw nothing but the best in his retirement. A couple of other, just very quick updates. I talked with Matt Starr of Crawford Hoing right before the council meeting started. It sounds like the, uh, the Coen Recycling property is scheduled to close tomorrow, uh, so that will kick off, um, the very beginning parts of that development. Uh, I'm a big believer in momentum, and I think about like the Rossville Flats that should be opening and accepting residents, uh, hopefully no later than mid to late September. So literally the next 30 to 40 days. But when you think about that and the construction that's now started at Anthony Wayne for the new Hilton Hotel, uh, just a lot of interesting developments that are, that are either finishing, starting, or at the very beginning. And I think that we'll have actually quite a few more announcements coming up here in the next 60 days and some other really, uh, interesting developments that I think will be, uh, great for the community. Finally, I just wanted to say, uh, please keep Michael Pittman, uh, of the Journal News in your prayers. His mother passed away earlier this week, uh, wanting to Jean Pittman. Um, you know, I've known, uh, Mike Pittman for a long time. I consider him a friend. I, I know that he works very hard at what he does and, uh, obviously a very trying time for him, so I just wanted to make sure council was aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Audience and council?
Mr. Mayor?
Vice Mayor Ryan?
Councilman Lauer, I'm going to wish you and your team the best of luck next Friday. And I also want to wish, uh, Big Blue, the best of luck. This is going to be exciting, as everyone heard tonight. I'm looking forward to it. So, um, it'll be a big win for the city, no doubt.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Nab?
Joshua, thank you for sharing the successes that we've experienced out in Enterprise Park. Like you said, it's such a, a distinct parcel to, to Hamilton. The expansion, the, the commitments that we've had from the businesses. I remember when the team from Vinyl Max were here a few months ago, and we approved it and hear Jody, congratulations on today's groundbreaking ceremony. But it's companies like that that really keep Hamilton. We talk about business retention, uh, when the folks here from Hamilton Castor a few months ago, and, uh, and the brothers were retiring and passing it along to the future generation. But Vinyl Max has been here a long time, and many of those companies out in the, in the Enterprise Park are so catalytic in what we do. Tyson Cropp in their growth and things. We just added all of these wonderful companies over the years, and they continue to grow with us. So thanks for bringing that, bringing that front and center. Uh, I also wanted to share that this coming Friday, our finance committee meeting will be at eight o'clock here in council chambers. It is a public meeting. For anybody that would like to participate in that meeting, uh, you're certainly welcome in conjunction with the Hamilton Flea in Markham Park. The students will be there for student activities. Some of the, the staff from each high school will be there. I'm sure that the, the athletic directors that met tonight in the presentation will be there. But it'll be a lot of fun. We heard about some of the alcohol, the, the food competitive activities. There will be a tug of war going on. Tommy Wong, who is here from the Boys and Girls Club, will also have members from the Boys and Girls Club for their tug of war and things like that. So please come to the Flea, celebrate with us at the Flea and that pep rally. But the Flea starts at 10 o'clock that morning and wraps up probably 4, 4:30 that afternoon. Support the area businesses that are part of it. Thanks very much.
Anyone else on council? I want to also mention Deputy Fire Chief Jeff Shaw. I don't think there's been no finer firefighter that I know. I thanked him for his fire public service, knowledge that he had, his leadership, and he's truly been a friend of, of Hamilton, Ohio. He is a fine gentleman, a fine public servant. Before the football game, or if you don't really like football too much, fit in center, paint the town red, season lodge, and, but that starts at 5 o'clock if I'm not mistaken. Is that right? Am I correct?
Correct.
So, paint the town red, and use either your green or blue paint if you go to the game after that. Okay, executive session.
Yes. Put my notes away. I got to pull them back out. I have for two different items this evening, Mayor. The first is to consider confidential information related to the marketing plan, specific business strategy of an applicant for economic development assistance, to consider the purchase of property for public purposes, and that is the two items.
Okay. Regarding the first request, your motion to executive session is found to be necessary to protect the interests of the applicant or the possible investment or expenditure of public funds, which should be made in connection with the economic development project.
So moved. Second.
First, my Councilmember Pullman. Second by Councilmember Vaughn. Rule call vote on that motion, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nabb?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Motion adopted. Seven zero.
That's at 8:12. Now set the motion, and we go to executive session for the stated purposes given by the city manager.
So moved.
Second.
First, my Vice Mayor Ryan. Second by Councilmember Pullman. Rule call vote on